Not a public hearing person.
They weren't waiting for me long last night, were they?
How about Donald?
How about Donald?
They weren't waiting long for me last night, were they? Our H O A wasn't long for me last night, were they?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
You're joking.
They're right.
Right in the right.
Right in the podium area.
Paid a mat.
This is like Communist China here.
Okay, we ready here?
Um, yes, I am. I think, are we everybody? Yeah.
I'd like to call the common council meeting for January fifteenth order. It's been appropriately noticed.
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
No, let's stand for the pledge. I'm looking at the agenda. It looks different for some reason.
New format, pledge of allegiance.
Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that started up bad.
Uh, roll call, please.
One second, Mayor. I have to get to that module.
Uh, by the way, the clerk will be doing all of the minutes taken on the computer tonight. And the way that works too is as we go through agenda items, they'll get timestamped for the video. So that if someone has a question on a specific portion from the agenda that they want to see on our video, they can just go right to it. So if we're gonna be up to date, but it may take a little bit of time to get up to speed on this, so be patient.
Okay, roll call. Alderman Shaw?
Here.
Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg? Alderman Zwort?
Here.
Alderman Stray?
Yeah.
Alderman Kavieski?
Here.
Alderman Miller?
Here.
Alderman Rosick?
Here.
We have a couple of special things before we get into our regular meeting. Um, as you all recall, when we had the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train come through town, we entered into what we call a friendly food fight with the village of Heartland. And we have with us tonight the president of the village of Heartland, Mr. Jeff Fannerstill, who was very gracious last night when I delivered the Oconomowoc jersey for him to wear during his meeting. So he has brought that back and he's also brought with him an Arrowhead jersey. And, um, we also have some representatives from the food pantry. So Jeff, if you want to come up to the podium and say a few things, and then I'll come up and we can, uh, do what we need to do.
Happy to be here to return this jersey where it rightfully belongs here in Oconomowoc. But no, one of the most important things that we did with this, where I'm happy that we did this food fight, though we did lose, I did keep my end of the bargain and I wore the jersey. I donned the jersey. Showing the two communities coming together and just how much we're doing and how the communities can win. Lake Country as a whole wins and it really, I think it really created a lot of a spotlight on the food aspect of the Holiday Train. Sometimes that gets lost in the shuffle. And especially around the holiday times and with the new year, we all, you know, you can get lost in the shuffle that we're focusing on the things that we want to do for ourselves. And we forget that there are needy out there. And that's what the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train is all about. And I think that Heartland and Oconomowoc really stepped up to the plate. And I think doing this really put a spotlight on the fact that we want to raise food or funds so that we can help the needy. And I can't thank you guys all enough for being part of it. Mayor Nold for coming to our meeting yesterday. Our representative from the Waukesha County Board was there. It really caused people to get into it. We're gonna really bring it next year, so pass it on to your community. Gonna really have to spice it up, but I can't sit here and boast because we lost. But we did put a spotlight on the needy, so thank you guys, all of you, and to the entire city of Oconomowoc. Good job on raising so many funds and so many pounds of food.
Thanks, Jeff. Kristy, you want to come up with the representative from the food pantry?
Again, on behalf of our logistics crew, thank you, thank you, thank you beyond for all the support that we do receive for this type of event in Oconomowoc. So at this time, Liz, our food pantry rep, we would like to hand her the large check, if everyone can see. We did this last year in honor and it helps us keep track of how much fun and how much goodwill and graciousness this community, in all aspects. It's not only the residents, but it's everyone that comes to Oconomowoc and everyone that calls Oconomowoc home and loves everything we have to offer here. So, on behalf...
On behalf of the community, our community, this is the, we raised three thousand three hundred seventy, three thousand three hundred seventy-seven pounds of food we collected. And we also collected seven thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty cents. So it's a very good achievement by the city. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to the train. It was a cold night, but we did a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll go this way?
I wore Mayor Nold's jersey, but this is my son's.
I thought you were supposed to wear it here.
It's your son's, okay. Congratulations on winning. All of you are welcome to come to Arrowhead on Thursday because Oconomowoc is wrestling Arrowhead at our house, so just want to extend that. You've all very much, congratulations.
Wrestling in the bullet center?
The bullet center?
We also have another group of guests here with us tonight. We have Cub Scout Pack Ninety-Nine based out of Saint Jerome's Parish in Oconomowoc. And Alderman Kavieski will give us a little information on them. I think he's very involved in that group.
Uh, sure. Uh, so, welcome to the council meeting. The pack had a brief tour of the city of Oconomowoc's police department and was educated a little bit about what our officers provide for our community in regards to public safety of people in person, uh, people in places. The Cub Scout Pack Ninety-Nine is based at Saint Jerome's in Oconomowoc and is sponsored by the Knights of Columbus. They are a part of the Potawatomi Area Council of the Boy Scouts of America in Waukesha County. Their mission of, for the scouts is to help, I'm reading in small text, so bear with me, is to help ever increasing number of youth mature into adults exhibiting traits of participating in citizenship, character, and personal fitness founded upon the moral and ethical values expressed in the scout oath and promise and law. Thank you very much for taking the time to come and find out more about your community, how it operates, and the police department. Welcome.
Welcome, boys. Okay, now we'll get down to business. Our first agenda item is a public hearing. Public hearing is, the purpose of the hearing is to hear public comment on the application by the city of Oconomowoc to amend section seventeen point one oh six table of allowed uses and zoning code pertaining to medical or dental office slash clinic and physical occupational or massage therapy. Jason?
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to introduce this public hearing. This is a request made by city staff to amend the zoning ordinance text amendment. This change would allow for medical and dental offices and clinics along with physical occupational and massage therapy uses to take place on any industrial zone property. These uses would be classified as permitted by right. They would need an occupancy permit to conduct business in the industrial zones. There's approximately forty parcels of land with industrial zoning. Mostly, these are located on the West Side Industrial Park. Planning was asked about allowing one of these uses on an industrial property and they had to say it was not allowed. The industrial district already permits a variety of different types of uses. Also, the requested medical uses are currently allowed in the corporate park, which has the business park zoning. So this change would allow for some flexibility to the owners of industrial zoned lands, allowing another type of use to basically occupy these types of buildings. The plan commission held a public hearing last, uh, earlier and they recommended this text amendment with a six to one vote. So the public hearing meeting was last week and they did recommend this to the council. I'd be happy to answer any questions during the meeting portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any public comment on this, for this public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to regular business. First item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting, common council meetings, common council minutes from December fourth of 2018. We need a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Comments and suggestions from citizens? If you have a comment, please fill out a blue card. I have two of them here so far. Joyce Lex?
Good evening. My name is Joyce Lex. I live at eighteen sixty-three River Lakes Road South. I'd like to bring attention to the common council, an issue that has occurred in the Pabst Farms subdivision adjacent to the Village of Summit Newman subdivision, construction that involves the safety and possibly financial liability to the city. Since construction has begun in the Newman development, construction traffic has been using Pabst Farms, excuse me, Pabst Farms subdivision streets as a shortcut, an alternative route to deliver construction materials. Signs directing the trucks to use construction entrances have proven ineffective. One of the residents has called the Oconomowoc Police Department regarding the issue. However, by the time the police arrive, the trucks are gone and in the Village of Summit. Construction traffic occurs in the morning when buses transport children to school, which causes a safety issue. In addition, there's a concern that the heavy equipment can cause damage to the pavement in the subdivision. I'm asking that the city consider erecting a sign limiting traffic to under, uh, to under a specific weight limit at the entrances to the Pabst subdivision and a sign requiring construction traffic to use the Newman subdivision entrances on Valley Road and Sawyer Road. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Bruce White?
Hello, my name is Bruce White. I live at eleven thirty-eight Hubbard Court. And I'm also on the Park and Rec Board and just wanted to encourage you all to, don't give up on the Roseno Creek improvements and park, or the addition to the park and the bicycle trail. I think it's, it's a great resource that we have, the Roseno Creek is. And it's a good opportunity for us to continue using that area. And that's important to a lot of people. And I think our, um, our city still has to continue to be very positive towards bicycle usage. So that was it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh.
Hello, everyone. I am your newly elected state representative, Barbara Dietrich. And at your request, I have come to make sure I introduce myself to the entire city council. Some of you have met, some of you I've known a long time. And others of you, I'm just meeting this evening. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about my role in helping you, the council, and our area as your new state legislator. When what the city does intersects with state government, I'm there as a resource. My hope and what I ran on was really keeping things moving in a positive direction for our state. Good jobs, low taxes, and really combating the opioid crisis, which continues to make the news. No one is immune from that. So, just to reach out to all of you, I want to make sure that you know that you can call my office anytime you see me around town here. My husband's lived here all his life and I've been here nearly thirty years. So don't be a stranger. I'm here for all of you. And I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we will move on to other items. The first item is the consent agenda. The first thing is licenses. The second item is to set trick or treat hours for Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, from six to eight P M. And the treasurer's report for twenty eighteen, or for December of twenty eighteen. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda? No moved?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Uh, moving on, did you have something, Charlie?
Need to approve the minutes.
Oh, Jesus, I forgot that, huh?
No, we did. We did.
We approved those.
Okay. Sorry, I missed it.
Thought we approved them.
We did.
Yeah.
My fault.
It's a point of order, Mr. Shaw.
Get rid of him.
Committee reports, first item is protection of welfare. First item is consider act on a resolution to approve the suburban mutual aid response teams called SMART agreement. Need a motion to approve the resolution? No moved?
Not yet.
Uh, Chief, you want to give us an update?
The suburban mutual assistance response team was formed in nineteen ninety-four, pretty much in Waukesha County. City of Oconomowoc joined a short time later. It is now at seventy-one members. Couple of years ago, or last year, I believe it was, Attorney Riffle's law firm got involved in reviewing the bylaws, made some changes, brought the new bylaws forward. It's here for your approval today.
Okay, any questions? This was talked about, a committee was approved, or recommended, I should say. We have a motion in a second?
Yes, we do.
We have a motion in a second on the, on this. So call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
And moving on to plan commission, first item is consider act on ordinance to amend section seventeen point one oh six, table of allowed uses of the zoning code relating to medical or dental office clinic and physical occupational or massage therapy. We need a motion to give the ordinance its first reading.
No moved?
A second.
Discussion, this is what we had the public hearing on. If anybody has any questions for Jason, he's here, ready, willing, and able to answer your questions.
I have, yeah, one real quick one, Jason, that I made a note of. Why this changed now? That's one of the questions I had. Do we have an applicant that's trying to move like a massage parlor or dental office into an industrial area? The planning department was approached by someone that wanted to put up a chiropractor in an industrial zoning. I had to say no to it. That person did go to Alderman and we've had discussions about it. And it was something that I was interested in, you know, pursuing. I researched it further and, you know, these similar uses are allowed in the business park. And I just thought industrial is a very similar district. Industrial zones are evolving over time. We have a variety of uses. I could go through some of the uses that we've allowed. Include a jujitsu fitness center. We've allowed private storage contractor offices, condominiums. I mean, it's a very open-ended industrial zone. So I thought with the requests that we've had in, let's try to be flexible for these owners and businesses to occupy vacant spaces in the industrial area. There's not a lot of industrial land. I don't see an influx of a lot of medical users coming into the industrial areas. Like, we only had like forty parcels total in the whole city. I mean, we have over five thousand parcels. So it's a very small number. It's just something that I just thought we could be a bit more flexible in our zoning. Thank you, Jason.
What wasn't one of the items that came up too was a lot of the sports medicine facilities that require larger buildings. This is something that they could use. You can't do that really in a strip mall. You need something with a higher ceiling or, you know, something you'd be familiar with Kevin with the size of your building, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, Derek?
I was wondering if this, if we approve this, they'd be permitted by right. It wouldn't be a conditional use, correct? What would be the drawback of letting it be allowed as a conditional use?
Well, there's two types of uses. There's permitted by right and there's a conditional use. The biggest drawback is if you made it a conditional use, it, there's a lot more time involved and money for the applicant. Typical fee would be anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars. And then, you know, it's about a two-month process versus permitted by right, it's, there's no cost to the city and they can be in within forty-eight hours.
Our conditional use, I know that when his auto was in here, they had to come and reapply for their, for their conditional use after five years or something like that.
Derek, stand with the system.
The biggest reason we went through this whole exercise is to change, again, from our wise friends in Madison to say that if you want to change your code to allow for conditional uses, you must put in standards that are measurable. And so if you want to go through a process of saying, well, we want to permit those types of uses in that particular district, you must come up with measurable standards. And I think the trade-off is that we get so, number one, there's so few of these parcels in the city, number one. Number two, who's going to object to that particular use in that particular district? And that's the reason why we went through this whole exercise to try to eliminate every single conditional use. Because legislature bowing down to special interests are trying to get rid of conditional uses. They want everybody to know going in, okay, it's permitted here, it's not permitted there. That's really what is behind this, even though Mr. Frederick here will disagree with me. There he is. No, he will agree with me that, that that's, no, he won't agree that that's the purpose. He'll agree, never mind.
I'm confused.
Well, the reason I ask that is because you pointed out, we have so few industrial areas. And if we start allowing just about everything in our industrial, if we start saying, well, we can, they can have a small restaurant there or something like that. We start to lose our ability to have industrial uses here down the road. And I just want to be careful that we don't, that industrial doesn't become business park because we won't have industrial anymore. We won't have any space if somebody were to come to town and want to have some type of an industry. So we have to be careful with allowing just about anybody who comes forward with, with a new plan to use their industrial space with having everything allowed by right. I'm just saying there's a reason we want separation. And if we, if we dilute it too much, we won't have it if we ever need it someday. And the other point I wanted to make, and I don't know if this is valid, but the commercial land values are about six times of what the industrial land values are. So therefore, people may start to want to put those uses in there in the industrial sites because the rent may be cheaper than commercial. And as long as we have commercial sites available, maybe that's where we want them. That's all.
I agree with everything Derek is providing information on. Zoning is one of the most important things that the city has as the city develops. And if we start to dilute those specific areas, we can put ourselves in a position that we might not want to be in. And I think we've utilized that conditional use and I understand the change of statute and what it does. But that's kind of why we're here, right? So if somebody wants to do something there and it makes sense and it meets the criteria associated with conditional use, they go through it and we allow it. And we've done that before and I think we should do that again. But have clear delineation what industrial should be, what, what, and use the zoning the way it's supposed to be used.
But it sounds to me like the two of you are arguing that you want to zone out those uses entirely in the industrial district.
Well, they are right now, right?
I know.
Yeah, they are right now.
I know. So you want the status quo?
No, they, I think, when, um...
Hang on, Kevin, you had your hand up?
I did. Um, I was at the meeting when you brought up as far as commercial versus industrial and pricing and things along those lines. I went home and I thought about that for a second because there's some validity to what you're saying. However, what it really boils down to and the reason why there's such a difference in the pricing, if you want to call it that, is supply and demand. The bottom line that I see is in commercial areas, there's usually a lot of foot traffic. And because there's so much foot traffic, there's more of a visual. People see these places, the probability of their, their product being bought, the probability of their item being sold is greater than that of an industrial area where maybe there's not as much foot traffic. So what happens there is your price per foot for commercial is going to be greater because there's more of a demand for it as compared to the industrial where there isn't as much foot traffic. And because of that, they want to provide something that would be tolerable for that rent. Now, I can only use myself as an example. When I was at Fowler, my rent was a specific amount. I'm pretty close to the city. So because of that, I'm going to have more foot traffic. Because of the more foot traffic, there's more of a probability or a possibility for people to see, people to come in and people to purchase. Now I'm on the other side. I'm actually in the village now. I'm kind of in a valley, if you want to call it that. You pretty much have to come up to the building to be able to see me. My rent is three times less than what it was and I have twice the space. So, to answer your question, I think that the pricing is insignificant because you're talking about apples and oranges. At the end of the day, it is really about the supply and demand of it. And by taking what we currently have and opening it up, it brings that draw in more than it does at this point. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second on the floor to update the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Nay.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Nay.
Four to three?
Um, four to three, correct.
Moves forward to the second reading.
Can I make a motion?
Yes. Well, hold on. You can't make a motion.
We have a lot of really significant things that are coming up that I believe are priority one, Thackeray Trail, we've got a whole bunch of other things. I think they need to have our priority and our focus. I'd like to make a motion that this be the final reading.
You know, and, and I was going to talk about that, if, if, if we want to put in an agenda item that would state basically after every ordinance through its first reading, is there a motion to waive the second reading? Can I do that?
It's on the agenda tonight, it is by.
Because it's been done. So as a standard practice, we will start to do that where we will say, is there a motion to waive the second reading?
You don't have to do that.
So Kevin basically is making a motion to waive the second reading, correct? Okay, we have a motion to waive the second reading, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Move and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I don't think that, that anything's going to change anyway, even if we have a full council, I'm guessing you would vote for it as well.
I, I, I'm in favor of having businesses go wherever they can, yeah, and I agree with what Kevin said.
So I don't think anything's going to change, we might as well not have to talk about it again.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second? That's really not a, the best reason to do it, but I guess we'll go that way. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Nay.
That was a nay, correct?
A nay, that was stuck in my throat.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so five to two.
Five to two, correct.
Okay. Moving on to news, new business, we have an item, consider acting a resolution approving the twenty-nineteen Lake Country Municipal Court budget, we need a motion to approve the resolution?
No moved?
Second it.
Chief?
You can see from Mr. Catman's memo that the Lake Country Municipal Court budget has been submitted with a projected surplus of six thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars for two thousand and nineteen. Here for your approval today.
Do we have any questions on the budget? Again, this is a budget we have to approve, so. Any, no questions? We have a motion in a second on the floor?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw? Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Staff reports, first item is Mr. Frye with an update on the Thackeray Trail permit process.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this project, the extension of Thackeray Trail, just for a little bit of history, in twenty-seventeen, the common council set forth an initiative to start the permitting and design process for Thackeray Trail and so we have been working on it since the budget approval and, and through the year of twenty-eighteen. Part of the, some of the things that we've done to date, excuse me, completed wetlands delineation in August, had a pre-application meeting with the DNR in October, our permit application for the wetland fill area was submitted in November. We'd also had received our geotechnical report, we had several soil borings done through the proposed street section, so we would know what the materials were underneath it. We did a resolution of necessity for a small triangular piece of land that we need for the project. The DNR has set a public hearing for the wetland fill permit, that will be in the Thursday, January seventeenth, Conomak Enterprise advertisement, it is on the DNR's website and that meeting will take place on Monday, January twenty-eighth, from four to six o'clock and it'll be in the council chambers here. So that's a meeting set up and, and run by the DNR, it's for them to take comment regarding the wetland fill permit. So the, the street that we're talking, obviously Thackeray Trail, kind of working left to right on the drawing in front of everybody, we're going to, along the existing street that comes off of Silver Lake Street, that was constructed when Saint Jerome's built their school, we will be adding in a, an eight-foot wide path that'll come along the north side of the street and then that'll also turn and connect up into an existing sidewalk for the school. The street section through that area is a boulevarded section which does match what's in the existing Thackeray Trail. We are going to be narrowing down the cross-section of the street, you can see that, we have a sixty-foot right-of-way cross-section in the area that goes from right where it starts here, curves around and then right here at this point is where the wetlands start and then all of this area through here is wetlands, so I'll be kind of talking about those in, in two different ways. So we have a sixty-foot right-of-way, it'll be a thirty-three-foot wide street which is a standard street in our subdivisions. We do have two different sized streets that we can have within the city, one of them being thirty-seven feet, the other one being thirty-three. Thirty-three does allow for cars to pass easily, it also allows a wide enough asphalt lane that's considered a shared lane, that it's wide enough for both vehicles and bikes, pedestrians, should they wish. We will also be extending an asphalt eight-foot wide path from where the project starts by the Saint Jerome's driveway and going to the wetlands. Once we get to the wetlands, there's a slight change, the asphalt path will become a boardwalk that's done to minimize the disturbance of the wetlands and the street will stay the same width, but we're only having a fifty-foot right-of-way through that area to further reduce the amount of area that we're going to disturb and then the street will then transition back in and match in to the end of the existing Thackeray Trail. The section from the end of Thackeray Trail up to Emerson Drive, the crosshatch area that you see, we're going to be resurfacing that, we know that this is a temporary paving for this area, knowing that at some point in time when Thackeray Trail is reconstructed from this point going forward, we'll be making a transition from whatever is determined to be the cross-section of Thackeray Trail and, and where this point is right here. The stormwater from the new street will flow this way and then come out of pipes that are here that go to each side of the street, this, any water coming to the south here will flow through this grass area before it gets to where there's a little stream right here, the rest of the street from about this point over and this point in will go into catch basins which will then deposit the water into the two existing ponds. The city actually owns the two ponds by Saint Jerome's, we participated in the cost of the construction of them, knowing that we would be extending Thackeray Trail or we had plans to extend Thackeray Trail and that would allow the stormwater to go there. The, there's been a lot of talk about this stormwater that comes down through here and some of the issues and concerns with it and yes, there's quite a bit of stormwater that comes down through the existing Thackeray Trail. We have about a ninety-acre drainage area that comes along through the ditches that are on the north side of the street and we have about a seventy-five-foot drain, or seventy-five acre drainage area that comes through the ditch line on the south and then about forty acres from the high school. The north water comes down through here and right now crosses approximately in this area, it's in the same spot where the discharge from the Conomak High School is and then that water proceeds along through this little stream, comes around the corner here, goes under the driveway here and then comes and crosses underneath Silver Lake Street and goes into that large wetland complex that's there. So the water right now is not contributing to this wetland and so a couple of the things that we're going to be doing in order to minimize the size of the culvert that we have to build here in order to cross this water over, we're going to pick up some of the water back here at Emerson and bring it to the south side ditch, we're going to have to upsize some of the culverts, there's a driveway here and a driveway here that's used for access to the parking lot, so we will be handling the stormwater that way. You know, a lot of the concerns that we've been hearing from those in Thackeray Trail have got to do with the existing street, you know, the lack of pedestrian facilities and, and their stormwater concerns. This project does not impact those negatively at all, it's just the extension of the street which has been looked at for quite some time. So the whole purpose tonight was to kind of show the, the layout, talk a little bit about the stormwater for it and make everybody aware of the public hearing coming up on January twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mark. Any other staff reports?
Nothing else.
Reports and comments from Alderman? Nothing from the Alderman? Reports and comments from the mayor?
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry, I had a couple of quick things. Yes. As reports from Alderman. Last night I was able to meet with quite a few folks over at Thackeray Trail, they had a, you know, kind of a, a meeting with the local residents and they do have some concerns about this project. I think the stormwater is one of the things that was mentioned, I mean, a lot of things were mentioned, but I, one of Mark's comments is that the connection of the road's not going to impact pedestrian traffic. Well, I think it is because it's going to increase traffic. So those are kind of the things I heard at that meeting, I think are important to note and we need to keep those folks kind of aware of what's going on, this is the first time we've really seen kind of a plan. I also met with the, the same night, believe it or not, the Eastlake Village Homeowners Association and the Lex, Mrs. Lex brought up a good point, that's one of the things I wanted to quick comment on, is doing something about that construction traffic, whether it's a sign, a weight limit sign or something from the city, at least in the first connection there to Newman and maybe the second one, we are getting a lot of, it, it's not just the plumbing traffic, but it's, it's the big construction trucks and part of the reason is maybe the, the roads and the streets aren't on maps and Google Maps yet, but it's something I'd like to, us to look into.
Hang on, we, we'll, we'll talk about that, the city attorney.
Okay.
And I will talk about it.
And then the other, the last comment I had was, well, I, I complained to the city a while back and I heard more, some more folks at the Eastlake Village Homeowners Association talk to me, we, we still have this large massive pile of rocks at the corner of our development that have just been left there and I've, I've asked the city to look into it, I've, I've not gotten any real legitimate response on this, but it's a nuisance, there's coyotes living there and I, I can't imagine that we as a community would let any other developer essentially take a huge massive pile of rocks and just leave them somewhere. If Newman right here left a huge pile of rocks on the edge of the lake and just left it there for twenty years, I know we'd do something and I, I think I'd like the city and I'd ask the city and the department heads that are involved with that to look into that again for me on behalf of our residents, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, good. Kevin?
Uh, yeah, I did have a question in reference to the stop sign that I had, we talked about last month in reference to where Pabst Farms and Fleet Farm is, what's going on with that? Is there anything going on at all? I'm just concerned, the safety is there is just, it's huge.
At the intersection, we did have the engineers look at that, actually it was the engineers that designed the intersection for the developer out there, they provided a couple of things to, to look at. Now, one of them was not, you know, looking at doing a four-way stop, we were actually at that time looking to address a couple of issues where people exiting out the, that secondary access road are turning short and they're ending up going the wrong way.
Yes.
In the median, so they suggested a couple of signs, we had already added a sign there for do not enter and then some pavement marking. One sign that they suggested is on, in process of being installed, the other one we have to order and the pavement marking we can't do until the streets are warmer, so we are looking at that. We do monitor intersections for crashes or any data that would indicate a need for different types of traffic control.
Can, can we like put a temporary stop sign there or something because just the other night I was coming out of there and I almost got hit.
You know, as I mentioned, you know, with, you know, we get a lot of requests for stop signs through the city, everybody, you know, generally want to use them for speed control, this is obviously a different situation.
Yes.
And, and we do review the intersections, we coordinate our efforts with the police department and look at any crash or any history or data that would require it because we need to have some type of standards when we look at to where we place stop signs because if we didn't, then everybody that would ask for one, it's hard to pick and choose which ones you approve and deny, so.
Well, no, no disrespect to that, but I think we need to be more proactive because of where it is and the speed at which these cars are driving, are traveling. So if, if there's anything that we can do to put something up there temporarily or, or, you know, maybe a, a yellow light or something, until we can finally go ahead and make some final something with that, I'd, I'd really appreciate that because like I said, it's, number one, it's very dark there, it's tremendously dark and number two, you got cars that are doing forty, forty-five miles an hour in that one area right there.
Well, that, that's a police issue.
Well, regardless if it's a police issue, regardless if it's a police issue, we should be proactive so that there are no issues.
And, and as I mentioned, we will work with the police, we will look at the intersection, we'll review it. I'm not aware of any issues to date other than the concerns of cars turning short at the median and we're working to address that right now.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any, none? I have a comment myself. I'm going to have another town hall meeting, January twenty-ninth, which is two weeks from the night. It's an off night, that's, we have five Tuesdays in, in January, so I always like to do it when we have extra, extra Tuesdays, we have extra time, so. Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, five-thirty to seven-thirty, Community Center, same room, everybody's welcome, open discussion for two hours on any subject. Aldermen are welcome to come in and sit down and I know Matt was there last time and Mike's been there, Charlie's been there, Kevin's been there, it's been a good turnout and whoever wants to show up, show up, so. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, we need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.
This was the quickest meeting we've had for a long time.